Yeah, try to stretch it. Grow it out. No, I'm not feeling the best.
Hi, Commissioner, how are you?
Good. Good, brother.
Hello.
We don't have any citizens' communications. Nobody signed up.
Okay.
So... We're good. Who's doing the...
Yeah.
You? Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission Workshop. The time is now 5:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. We do have a quorum of the commission. Commissioner Morales is not here at the moment, but will be joining us shortly. But we do have a quorum, so we're going to go ahead and get started. If I could ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Lopez leads us in our invocation.
Dear Lord, help us through this budgetary cycle. Please help us stretch every penny we have to help those in need and help our residents and give us the best that we can. Amen.
Amen. What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on any agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None?
None.
No.
All right. Moving right along. Do we have anyone signed up for citizen communication?
No, Mayor, we don't have anybody.
Thank you. Item one, discussion of the proposed City of Harlingen budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Wonderful.
Mayor, before Robert gets started, I'd like to add that today is just going to be a workshop. There is no action planned for this evening. I am hoping to have the budget process completed by July, possible. We have done a bulk of the work already. There are no new positions in the budget that's being presented tonight. However, there were requests for several made by the directors. And so we're going to cover a lot of that today. We're going to cover all of the requests for capital items that were requested as well. And so with that, I'll ask Robert to start his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, staff. Welcome to our first budget workshop. I've started out with a few of the calendar dates and deadlines. We've gone through June, today was the 30th, so we're on our first budget workshop. In July, we plan to have two additional ones. They're tentatively scheduled for July 7th and July 14th. On July 25th, we expect to receive the certified totals from the appraisal district. That is the deadline that is required, so we expect to get that by that date. After that, for August, these are pretty hard deadlines that are required to be met in order to adopt our budget and tax rate in time. So this includes budget and tax deadlines. We got some on the first and the second, setting our tax rate, publication of the website, and then we set the desired tax rate on the 6th. We file the proposed budget with the city secretary after we make some decisions. The later part of the August, we plan to have our first reading on August 20th if everything goes as planned, and our second reading on September 3rd. So we're hoping to have the budget completed earlier this year, ahead of last year. Some of the budget goals that we continue to look forward to are to maintain city streets. We've allocated $1.5 million of funding towards that, which is the four and a half cents that we come, four and a half, $4.50 that we collect in our water billing. We also want to continue our drainage improvements, leveraging grants and trying to make those improvements. The city manager was able to negotiate a new insurance with a decrease of 7.5% and a one-time transition credit of $325,000 through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we also, another goal is the animal shelter and expanding that animal shelter capacity. And as we go along through the budget process in our next workshops, we can add other goals that we see fit to this slide. So just a quick overview of where we are as far as fund balance of the general fund. Beginning the year, we anticipate that we'll have $33,256,000 in our fund balance. We are proposing at this point revenues of $66,933,000 compared to proposed expenditures of $63,622,000. So that leaves revenues over expenditures of $3,311,000, more or less. So we'll end the year at 9:30, 2026, at this point, with $36,566,995.
I'd like to point out that if we were to have a repeat of this year for next budget year, that revenue number would be about a million less because of the credit of $325,000 from Blue Cross and of the savings that we had this year of 7.5%, which is about the $700,000.
Correct.
We will not have the credit the following year and probably will not have a subsequent decrease in the rates. At best, they'll stay the same, or at worst, they may go up a few percentage points. So just keep that in mind, that if this budget were to be repeated for next year, it'd be, the revenues over expenditures would be about $2 million instead of $3.
Correct. So our ending would be $36,566,995. We have a reserve of the 120-day minimum day requirement of $20,916,941. We always leave a buffer for encumbrances, which are like leftover POs that we roll over. We have a buffer of $500,000. So at 9:30, 2026, that's how much we have available, is $15,150,000, to be, if we were to be at the bare minimum on fund balance.
Just to point out, that's not a goal, to spend, that's just a number that we're giving.
The bare minimum. So the next slide, that's just an overview of the general fund, fund balance. So some proposed one-time purchases that are not included in the budget, and these are for consideration. We have Park on Stewart Place, which we've estimated at $200,000. We have Casa del Sol renovations, which we've estimated at $2 million. We have renovations, or Vestal Park renovations. We have the animal shelter expansion on Markowski. And then we have additional crew and equipment. And now, these are just for consideration, they're not in the budget yet. So we also have proposed grant award matches, which have already been awarded. So they're listed on the left-hand side, the name of the grant and the project in the middle. The grant award on the third column and what were projected as a match for the year. So it would be $2.219,000 in matching funds with these grant awards. So we're getting, we're getting $5,507,000 in grants, and we have a matching requirement of $2219,000.
The majority of these are for park projects. So what I wanted to do is, instead of asking the commission to fund the match amount out of the fund balance, I wanted to go to the 4B board and ask them to provide the matches for all these grants. It'd be easier to get funded because all of them have additional award funds from other sources. So for the 4B to fund these would be, and it would again, only be for the park projects. There are a few in here that are not parks, but those costs are minimal. The vast majority are for parks.
Do you know what the balance is in the 4B?
Yes, I do. It is available cash is about $7 million.
Seven million nineteen.
How much?
Seven million nineteen thousand.
Great.
And that's with most of the, I think all of the projects at the 4B have been wrapped up.
From what?
Right. We don't really have any commitments at this point.
That's a good idea.
Right. Seven million two hundred nineteen, is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, two hundred nineteen.
So we can basically fund all of these with the 4B?
Mm-hmm.
All the park projects? Yes. Yes, we can do that.
What is the seven million? Where's that?
I'm sorry?
4B.
Seven million, it said 4B?
Yes, 4B.
Our next slide are proposed grant award matches, but these are pending, they're not, that have not been awarded yet. They are still in the process. So this total is about $36,975,000, and the projected match is $6,748,000. And again, these are, these are still pending, that have not been awarded yet. So as we went through the budget process, which we started in March, we started with the department requests. This is what all of the departments requested to operate their budget. We began with $66,530,568. As we went through the budget process and met with the departments, some of the budgets were reduced. So we ended up with $63,622,363, and that's all the general fund departments. So the decrease overall was $2,908,205, which was about 4% decrease, to get us to the point where we're at, where we have a $3 million revenues over expenditures. So some of the proposed non-funded requests that were requested by the departments, we've listed them out on the following slides. So we have risk management, they're requiring safety supplies of $1,900. MIS is requesting upgrades of $109,916.
Here?
Actually, the $50,000, $645,000 was already budgeted this year.
Right, out of this operating budget, so...
Yeah, so that's about $70,000 or...
$60,000.
Sixty thousand that they are requesting. Police operations, they've listed out $1,111,000, and they've listed them out, item by item.
They are getting some trucks, is that right?
Yes, they are. Those are for patrol, I believe.
What says four by four? I don't know if these are those high-profile, because I, didn't we approve already?
We have, and I think we did that at the release. Is the chief here? No.
Yeah, there's two deuces.
Right?
Yeah, it was two deuces, right?
Yeah. I think they're like, last time me and I talked about it, it was like six grand each.
Right. So these...
Yeah.
These are just addition, these are just additional. Those were for the emergency.
Correct.
But I thought we had approved two trucks, or maybe that was fire.
No, I think we did approve, but they were for patrol, patrol units. They weren't for necessarily for emergency evacuations.
Well...
And we do have some in our inventory that we've ordered, mostly for public works.
Did we have any trucks or, not that I can recall, that we lost in the flood from PD?
Yes, we did.
Trucks?
From PD?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't think there were any trucks. There were some in, I think we lost some in fire, chief?
Right.
We did.
So the police, I would think that, do they have any?
I don't think they have any sufficiently high-profile vehicles.
Any deuces?
No, I don't think...
The two deuces are for the fire, or for PD.
For PD.
And then we're also, if you guys remember, like, six months ago, we bought that SWAT truck, that they're still building it, right?
Yeah.
And that's also supposed to be considered a high-profile vehicle.
So they do. So the question is, yes, so if, in the event of a disaster, they do have...
Wouldn't want to take that one into high water. It's too expensive. I'd rather take a pickup truck in there than, yeah.
Yeah, whatever. However you would like to proceed for. They can do that, that's what the chief told me when we talked about it.
Okay.
I just want them to be prepared, and it's better to invest now than to have to replace later. So if, maybe just look into that and see if that's necessary or not.
Question on the AEDs, how much, how many will $1,900 bucks buy? Do you know? That was the last page.
That's for risk management?
AEDs.
Oh, the AEDs.
Safety supplies. Right, that's what you're asking about?
Yeah. How many does that buy?
I am not certain.
Okay.
Does she put that detail in there?
It's okay.
Diffusor.
It's a diffusor.
Oh.
One. They're saying it's probably just one, one diffusor. What was that? Chris said that it's probably one diffusor. They're about that price.
We had to remove all the ones we had because components got outdated, so...
Yeah. But that only buys one.
So is, do we have any, I guess is the question?
No.
We have none.
Not in any of the buildings? I don't know if fire has any. You have AEDs in your, in your fire trucks?
On the fire trucks.
Yeah, they do. But those are, they stay in the trucks.
Parks has one. Chris says that Parks has one.
Parks has one? We should really have one in every building.
So the, so the proposed one is for...
Right? That's what I thought.
Is for what?
I don't know how many.
Do you know what that's for? The one that risk management is asking for?
No.
No? Okay. It might just be for their...
I can ask her, and then on our next workshop, I can get that information for you.
I mean, I...
I'll send it to you all before.
At the cost, and given the budget of the city, I think that we need, that's not where we want to cut. So it may be an inventory if all departments have, which departments don't have it, and which, I mean, and what, if, this was proposed for which department?
Risk management.
Is it risk management?
Yes.
We would probably just post, put it out in the lobby area, so it's available to anybody that needs it. You just have to break the glass.
Sure. That's kind of, yeah, so, I mean, within the proximity that it's needed for every department within the city. So some, obviously here is a shared space, and so is Luncie Hill.
We can get an inventory of all the buildings that we think need one, and then give that to you.
Yes. Wouldn't you agree? You're the nurse.
Oh, yeah. You don't know what it's like to code without a zap.
I don't even want to know. No, no. Okay.
So I'll get that information, and I'll send it to you all beforehand.
Okay.
So that was police operations. Police services, which is, I believe, a comm center. They need an uninterruptible power supply replacement, that's $120,000.
This, I'm sorry, pass-through evidence refrigerator, do we not have one already?
That, I'm not certain.
Do you know?
What was the question, Mayor?
Pass-through evidence refrigerator for the PD.
I think that might be a new one that they need.
Delula, you're up, man.
I'm assuming that this is for evidence that needs to be temperature-controlled. Do we have one? And if we don't...
I don't know what the answer to this, to that is, Mayor. I'll have to find out.
I'd text the chief to see if he'd be on, be coming. Now, we have a Zoom link, right? If the chief can hop on the Zoom, he can, wherever he's at, he can answer these questions.
I'm just saying, I mean, it's, we want to make, we want to fund essentials. But we can keep moving.
We can come back to that.
Yeah.
So fire suppression, they've requested $3,164,000, and we've got all the items that they request.
Chief Valderris, is this the same units that last year listed at $800,000, and now they're up to 1.2?
Engine one is the one that I requested last year, and that was for about $800,000, now it's $1.2 million.
With a three-year wait.
Okay. Thank you.
It's only money.
It's a pretty good plus-up.
50%.
Fire prevention, we have $39,000, that's one Ford Explorer. Engineering has requested $788,000. The majority of that is in professional services for various projects totaling $688,000. Also requesting two F-150s. Traffic signals.
All of these pickups are all going to be, they're all high-profile now, or is that the route we're going? No?
They are not. Traffic Signals has requested $301,500. They are also requesting trucks, traffic light cabinets. Street maintenance.
Real quick question, I'm sorry. Two slides back, fire suppression, requested a Tahoe SUV. And then on the next page over, they asked for a Ford Explorer. Why the difference? I only ask that because one's $65,000, one's $39,000, right?
Well, the one that fire suppression is asking for is for training travel. Currently, we don't have a vehicle to travel with. We're either renting or we're paying mileage. And the other one is for prevention. The fleet is old, and they need a replacement.
Do you need the Tahoe, or can we just switch to an Explorer? I haven't been in either in a while, so I don't know.
The thing is, when we travel, we usually go about four people, so we want it a little more comfortable. That's why we want a bigger, other than the Explorer. The Tahoe's a little bigger.
Okay.
So these are all non-funded? Right?
Right, no, they're not funded.
They're not funded?
No, we put all capital equipment in this category.
So how much, where's the chief? I don't have the, my right glasses, this whole, it's frustrating me. So you said that you, it's for training, and you currently rent or pay mileage. Do we know, mas o menos, how much annually we're spending to rent or mileage?
I don't have that, I can get you that information, see how much we've spent this year.
Yeah, to see, we might have savings just purchasing the vehicle. If, is that something you know, Robert?
I don't, but I can get that information, I can send it to you.
Okay.
Quick question, gentlemen. Is there any way that we can get those classes B down here instead of going to Austin or San Antonio?
A lot of these classes are for continuous education, so we kind of have to go where they're having these classes. Have we ever had any classes down here?
Oh, no, we have classes here also.
How far do you have to go?
We go as far as Frisco, in the Dallas area.
All righty, thank you.
And chief, sorry, you might as well just stay close by.
This is your new exercise program?
I'm assuming you saw the stuff that's not funded. Are there anything here out of the stuff that are not being funded that are, that you would say are safety issues, that you need them in order to be effective, to keep the guys safe and girls?
As far as safety, it's probably the compressor, the compressor for station one. That's the refilling station for SCBA's.
Okay.
And probably the bunker gear dryers.
And tell me what that is?
Those are our bunker gear. We have extractors at every station now, and so what those are, you put them in there for them to dry. It's kind of like a dryer.
Okay.
I mean, they can just leave it out and dry. It takes a little longer that way.
It's not humid.
Not with this heat. Yeah.
Okay. So the compressor and the bunker gear, what is a flooring station eight?
I want to redo the flooring at that station. What I've been trying to do is, you know, our stations are getting old, and we kind of do a little upgrade on them. That's why I have the cabinets also at those four different stations.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they just need a little upgrading.
Actual flooring?
Yeah, actual flooring.
Okay.
Before you leave...
Yes, sir.
How many of these were damaged on the rain we had in?
Actually, the one that did damage, there's only one station that flooded, that was Central Station, and they had just finished redoing the flooring there, so that helped. We ended up doing the epoxy on there, and so all we had to do was squiggy the water out.
How were the walls, did they get mold on it, or?
They're not, they're plaster. So we're still working on getting those cleaned up. We still haven't gotten them all cleaned up.
And Central Station?
It's the one on Jefferson. It floods every time we get four or five inches of water.
And then Station Eight's the one on Grimes?
The one in the, yeah, that one doesn't flood.
But you've got, that's where the lighting is?
Yeah, it's kind of dark at night, so I just wanted to put a few more light poles out there.
And then you wanted the flooring for that one, too?
Yes. We had done two stations this year. We did actually Central Station, and we did Station Seven, the flooring. And actually, another one, in-house, which they did a real good job over at Station Four. They took the carpet out. I don't know what department...
Public Works?
Yeah, they actually, I think, did a better job than the people we got to do the work at the stations.
So that was going to be my next question on potential. I know that they're really busy right now, but maybe some of these projects can be in-house and cut a little bit of the cost, like the flooring at least.
Yeah, and I know Parks has a new superintendent that can do a lot of construction work, it's all in-house. So if it's cabinet work and all that stuff, he could probably help the outfit.
I'm good with that.
Okay. They'll have to put you in the rotation, chief. Well, I'd like to see that the compressor station one and the bunker gear get funded. Just, we want to make sure that they're safe.
Commissioner, did you want to ask chief Albiada about the pickup trucks?
I figured we'd finish with the fire chief, and then we'll circle back to the police chief. And I figured, as we go through all these categories, that department heads pop up here for any questions. Save us all time.
Yeah, I think those are, those are, those are all the questions that I have for fire. There's nothing really to do for that station on Jefferson, and it's drainage issues that we need to work on.
Yeah, Ana's been doing a fantastic job.
Yeah, Ana's been doing a fantastic job working on it with Luis. And so, that was one of the budgetary issues that we had discussed earlier.
Yeah. Cause that's a huge issue, year after year, but it goes beyond just a band-aid inside the, the fire station. Okay. Anybody else have questions for Chief Alzada? Okay.
You wanna keep going or back?
Go back to the police chief, please. Should get the Price is Right music.
I need the wheel too, don't I?
The what? The wheel, yeah.
Chief, the question was if we had purchased any fire trucks for you, either through a lease?
High-profile.
High-profile? I'm sorry. Did I say fire trucks?
Yeah.
Not yet. I think that's what we were discussing last time. Get the profile trucks under the state forfeiture. Not forfeiture, the surplus. That's what we're gonna look at, but I think it was two for each department within it, two for fire.
I think that was approved out of the funds that we allocated to.
That, that has been approved, right?
Yeah, the four million. You haven't ordered that? You haven't ordered anything yet?
Not yet.
We're still searching.
You know, we're working with them to get those vehicles.
So then I guess, the question was, I think, if we don't, we don't, these F-150s that are here, those are not for high-profile trucks? I guess I didn't understand, cause it says Ford F-150, police responder, four by four, five of them. That's, are those high-profile vehicles or they're just trucks that are four by four?
No, these aren't, these are not the profile vehicles we were discussing. I think these are the supervisor vehicles.
Okay. And then the next question that I had was this pass-through evidence refrigerator, can you tell me what that's for?
That's to replace the, uh, the small refrigerator we have. To, to, uh, pretty much keep, uh, evidence with bodily fluids, uh, those kind, those kind of, uh, evidence items.
Right, that's what I was saying. So we don't, we have one, we just need it replaced. Okay, I think that's important, so that way the integrity of the evidence is, um, not compromised. Is there anything on your non-funded list that, um, that you need in order to operate effectively? Or anything that compromises safety of the officers that has not been funded?
No, I think everything we've asked for has been given to us. I know recently we asked for a vehicle for narcotics. And that's gonna be through, uh, forfeiture funds.
Okay.
Chief, the, uh, the food service trailer, is that for y'all's use? Is that for when you have events like the Lancy Hill Park? What's that exactly for?
This?
It's a twenty thousand dollar.
I hadn't even seen that one. Food service trailer. I'll look at it. I'll get you an answer today, this evening.
One of the sergeants kinda snuck that in there. Is that what happened?
If, it might, maybe that's the name of it. But if, if I'm correct, it's gonna be a trailer they had requested. That's gonna be, uh, it's gonna have a dual purpose for training and also to serve as a, uh, a, uh, incident command type emergency trailer. But I'll double-check right now. But it was more for training also.
Don't we have that big RV for incident command?
Not anymore. That was sold, uh, it was auctioned off a couple of years ago.
That never really worked.
Well, I just see it every time I go to Market Day. I used to see it when I was at Market Day.
Yeah, that one was.
It's just for show, I think.
We had brought it up down from Houston. And I think that when we initially obtained that particular vehicle, it, the value of it was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we got it for like thirty or forty, but it didn't serve its purpose anymore.
So then I presume if, if we're gonna do that, if it's gonna be an incident command, then eventually we're gonna have to get all the computers, radios, things of that nature for.
This one was more for an emergency response for the SWAT team. But it, when I say dual purpose, they also wanted to use it. We don't have, we have a limited amount of trailers, cause a lot of them were sold and, or auctioned. And I think there was one that was sold that just needed a door repair. But for some reason it was sold and it should have probably been repaired. But this one is, is, uh, this, this is the one that I, uh, was, it was mentioned to me that they wanted to have a dual-purpose trailer. I just need to confirm it's this one. But it was gonna be for training, where they could actually sit inside the trailer with air-conditioned, out on the field, while they're doing the, uh, the training, the firearms qualifications, et cetera. And then it would serve as a dual purpose in case they needed an emergency. They could have a vehicle that they could use, that it was air-conditioned and very low-profile. It was just gonna be a, a white trailer.
How many units do we have, just the PD own right now?
We have over a hundred units.
Is that all operational?
The, the biggest problem that we have is when they go down. I think we have enough units to operate. It's when they go down that we're short on units. So we have five to ten units that are down for repairs. And I know that we've been outsourcing some more, uh, some of the jobs that, uh, no, we're, we're outsourcing a lot of jobs because the city shop can't keep up. So that's where our problem lies. But I know we've been working with, uh, Public Works, with Chris and his staff, to make sure that these vehicles are, are getting fixed, whether they're in-house or outsourced.
We're outsourcing, meaning, um, we don't have enough mechanic?
Like going to, yeah, Lot, you wanna come up? Some of it is, is, I think some of the jobs are a little more extensive. And so we're sending them like to Sames Ford or to other shops.
So since we got two additional mechanics, we have been keeping up with, um, repairs, right? But there is times where they will get about ten to twelve units for oil changes. And therefore, we get to those, but if we have to outsource some to other shops, we'll do that, just so that he has the right equipment at all times.
I'd like to see on all of these things, cause y'all are the ones that, um, are, you know, you're in, in the departments and overseeing, uh, the, on the day-to-day. If we are spending more in outsourcing because we don't have enough staff, like, how much is that? And if we will save by having one more person, um, and it is cheaper for the taxpayer to do that than to outsource. I just always believe that whenever you send, you know, you say City of Parlington, then the prices for a City of Parlington, right? Versus the, the private pay individual. So if, if we could look at that, and that's for all of the directors that are, that are here. If you are having to pay, um, because that's what we've done with the drainage crew, right? We're, we're trying, we're trying to save money, so we need to be.
Drainage and streets?
Yeah, we need to be, be thinking of that. And are those cost-saving measures that we can take to ensure that we can provide the service quickly, efficiently? Get them back on the, on the road, and then we're saving more money in the long run. If it's not, then we keep doing what it is that we're, that we're doing, but.
One of the things that we've been trying to do is, is look at, at an option of not getting twelve, fifteen vehicles at one time, right? To have a rotation to that where if we get six or seven, we can get those quick, right? But if we get twelve to fifteen, it, it gets a little bit harder for our mechanics to get to those. And then plus, sometimes we get fires, sometimes we get, you know, our own vehicles from Public Works. One thing that I can tell you is we, we do have performance measures for our mechanics. And we have been generating revenue through our fleet shop in the last, I would say, seven to eight months, to where before we didn't.
Revenue, how?
So we, we work on vehicles through another department and we charge them for the service.
But, within the city?
Yes.
Okay, wow. That's like mommy giving money to dad, right?
How, how many mechanics do we have?
Five.
Five, okay. We just added two, yeah, so.
So that, that's great, and I'm glad that there's metrics and measures. But maybe, um, between you and Chief Alzadas and Alviad, you can come up with a maintenance schedule? So that way you, you're not overwhelming the mechanics.
And it has been working out, um, to where, I, like I said, before, we used to get ten to fifteen vehicles. Now we're getting six to seven, so it's, it's more doable.
I'd still like to see what that outsourcing, um, what that number looks like. So, because right now is the time for us to determine whether we need an extra person in that, in that department. And if it's gonna save the city of money, then it makes no sense to not do that.
Robert, can you work on that?
Yes.
For the mayor and commission? What? No, uh, the, the cost of outsourcing.
The outsourcing of, I'm assuming it is, so there's a difference between things that cannot be done, right? That there's special, um, skill or whatever, versus like oil changes and things that you routinely do. So let's make sure to differentiate by that.
That's the cost of sending, uh, vehicles out of the mechanic shop?
Cause that, it all depends on what is wrong with the vehicle, like, that could be.
Transmission issue compared to a fuel pump issue.
Right, so that's why we need to make sure that you're, we're looking at the right numbers.
So then you would want it almost broken up into, how many oil changes did we send out? How many transmission issues we sent out?
Right.
How many body issues we sent out? So that it would be easier for us to even pinpoint even further, do we need that or do we not need that?
And I thi, I think what would help is if we identify what services we cannot provide at the shop.
Correct.
Like the transmission, we can't do that. Obviously, that, those have to be sent out. I think those are the important ones to separate out.
We're doing our part not to overwhelm the mechanics here. We have an EVT program. And so we have our own guys that, that have been trained and they do our PMs on our trucks.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Every six months. So we got that going, so that we won't overwhelm them.
Sounds good.
The other issue, uh, chief, you can look at for me. You have a hundred units. Are you using all hundred units? Are they all in service?
Yes, sir, they are. Yes, sir, they are. We actually are, like, every week I meet with the, the supervisors and make sure that, what, what is, what units do we need to get rid of? So we're already looking at some vehicles already that we're trying to get, uh, out. I know, like, I spoke to Mr. Gonzalez and we discussed that one particular, it was a, uh, it was a Nissan Sentra, a two thousand and three Nissan Sentra with like a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles. And the officers were still using it for narcotics, uh, operations. So the pickup, the F-150 is gonna replace that particular vehicle.
But we're buying that though with forfeiture funds, so it's not hitting the general fund.
Yeah, but I just wanna mention that, that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that we have enough vehicles on the road to do the job.
And, and we're still getting vehicles that we, that the commission authorized for lease?
For lease, yes. And those are the patrol, a lot of them are patrol vehicles.
Right. I, I think all of them are patrol vehicles.
Yes, sir, and, and I discussed this with Mr. Gonzalez. We agreed, probably in about a year. Or this, when it's, uh, when, uh, our one-year term comes up, is figure out whether or not it's, it's, uh, cost-effective to be leasing with, uh, uh, instead of, uh, purchasing.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before you take off, and Chris, this is basically for, for you. And Robert, don't take off too far. As you're working on this, do you have a crew, Chris, that deals only with oil changes and tire, tire changes? And do you have the chief? I'm looking at PD here. Are there units set up to where every two weeks they get an oil change or every week? Or they come?
Yeah, we, uh, Commissioner, we, we keep up with all the maintenance on them. We make sure that the vehicles are, uh, every day, I actually sent an order, had sent an email and the officers are doing it. Every day, they're opening the hood and checking the, uh, coolant, the fluids, making sure that they're, that they're up, up to their correct levels. Because we were having problems with Chevy pickups at one time where they were losing up to a quart of oil. Uh, and these are new vehicles. And it's just, uh, something that happens with these Chevy pickup trucks. So we were checking the oil, making sure that there were.
Losing a quart of oil a week, a day?
Like, within a couple of weeks, they were losing oil. Yeah, so we were having to check, uh, doing some preventive maintenance on them, or checks, before they went on the road. And we were, we were making them do it every single day, because we didn't want them to, to, and that actually solved a lot of our problems. Because we stopped, uh, having some of the ser, more serious problems where like, uh, engines were going out.
We don't have any Chevy trucks now, do we?
We do.
We still do?
We still have them on patrol.
Are those, were those ever leased or did we purchase?
Those were purchased. The new Dodges, I mean, the new Chevy pickups, there are some that were purchased and the new white ones, they were leased. So, but they're checking the oil, the oil on those and the coolants. I mean, just making sure that, uh, even before the mileage is, uh, the oil change comes up, we're checking them, making sure they're running.
So PMCSE?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Sometimes we do things at, at, at the police front. We have a lift there at the department and, uh, our fleet officer, he goes in there and sometimes does a quick oil change if it's needed and the shop can't do it, or it, it gets, it needs that PM. So our officers are also getting their hands dirty.
Shit.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on.
Engineering's next.
Engineering, that's a big number there.
Page twelve.
Seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand for various, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand for various projects. What does that even mean?
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. Luis Vargas, City Engineer, for the record. So, um, we're trying to outsource some of the professional services to match the, the man of, um, design packages for drainage, parks, public buildings, trails and transportation projects.
Okay. And so it's kind of a, a big, um, that's a big figure. So where, where's the bulk of it coming from?
So.
Drainage?
Every year, we get a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty thousand. There's more or less thirty-five thousand to fifty thousand, um, spent in testing services. And that's for all the construction projects. So we're left with about a hundred thousand. Of that, we've used, uh, professional services for benefit cost analysis for some of the grant application projects. And, uh, what we're asking is, uh, we, we split two hundred thousand for drainage projects. And then we have one hundred thousand for parks, one hundred thousand for public buildings, one hundred thousand for trails, and then two hundred thousand for transportation, that's streets, traffic, or right-of-way, uh, projects in general. And then land surveying, fifty thousand. We have fifty thousand for architectural services. We, we get requests to design a park, right? And, uh, we put out exhibits, but we'd like for that to be outsourced with an architect or maybe a landscape architect that could do, uh, the best job for us. And then, of course, the traditional geotechnical testing for fifty thousand. So that's, that's kinda like the breakdown of the eight hundred and fifty thousand that we're asking.
So how are you doing it now? With that, I mean, would you say your budget was a hundred and fifty thousand?
So some of the drainage projects, we design in-house. But there's so much capacity that we could take. I'd like to say that, yeah, we can design them all, but we don't have the time. So time is an important factor that we have to consider. And because the time is limited and the demand is so high, we need to outsource some of those services.
And do you have projects that are, um, that you are anticipating completing or for this next fiscal year where that figure correlates?
Sure, yeah. So we have a project allocation list with, um, don't have the number right now. I have it in my, in the laptop, but, um, there's, the lips come drain. The asphalt needs a lot of work. Uh, there's erosion problems there. So we didn't, we didn't a design package exclusively for that. Uh, there's the Palmetto and Breedlove application, uh, which is a drainage project. It's two subdivisions, uh, that we like to outsource that design. There's also the, um, Horseshoe Lake, which is a regional detention pond that we're trying to acquire. That's also going to require a, uh, design package. And then there's Treasure Hills and Twenty-Fifth. It's another intersection that's gonna need a design, uh, for us. And then, well, we've just recently got the draft report of the flood study. And so that is gonna give us the BCRs or benefit, benefit cost ratios, uh, which we can apply for grants. And we'd like to do a lot of that design in-house, but like I say, uh, because there are many, many projects, some of that we'd like to outsource, so we can, um, get designed or shovel-ready projects sooner and faster, yes. And so tho, that's the drainage component. For parks, we're assisting the Parks Department, uh, in a design package for Victor Park. And that's has grand, that has. And that has grant, has grant money. It's got Texas Parks and Wildlife involved, it's got C D B G. And there's a building, so there's mechanical, electrical and plumbing services. A restroom facility that we like to outsource. So that's a component that is also in the ask of that eight hundred and fifty thousand, right?
I guess what I'm trying to figure out, Luis, is if this is a one-time, like you need it for this next year or it's an ongoing need?
It's ongoing because.
I would say it's an ongoing because when I was hired in twenty twenty-two, right, we, we had a, a grant from ARPA and we have, had a list of engineers. And so that R F Q, there were nine engineers and so it was a rotating list. And, but that R F Q is three, four years old now, right? And so the goal is that I can align the funds so I can have another list of engineers that I can use. And I think now it's the time to do that. And I mentioned some of the drainage projects, like I say, some of them are parks. We thankfully completed a public buildings design for the, for the kennels, outdoor kennels. There was a component that we had to outsource, which was the structural component and the windstorm engineering. And so situations like that, we outsource, right? We like to do as much in-house as possible, but because of the time constraint, we have to outsource some of the things.
Do you ask for any engineers in your budget?
Yes, I did ask for an engineer.
I didn't see that.
It's not in the, it's not in the.
Because, yeah.
I'm not sure why it's, it's not there, but I did send the email with the request.
Because the same thing that I said earlier in terms of what can we do to minimize cost? Do we need more staff instead of outsourcing all departments? Your department is, is crucial to the future of the city of Harlingen. And as we continue to grow, we're going to require more of, of, of your department, Public Works, every, every department, really. So, you know, I think that we need the same type of analysis, Robert, done. And then Anna, I have a, if you want to come up here really quick. You don't have to leave, Luis. I don't know if these guys have more questions.
I'm going to give her the microphone, go ahead.
So I know throughout this last year, we've talked about delays in getting different designs for projects and for grants. How can you share with the commission just briefly what that experience has been over this last year? Because it seems like that's been a, a reoccurring issue. Would that not be, not, not that they're not doing it, it's just waiting to get the approval to be able to get either, you guys have a lot of work going on, or to be able to get the approval to outsource.
As far as like additional work that needs to be completed?
For your grant applications.
Yeah, so some of the grant applications, so I think one of the, one of the things that maybe we need to work on improving is kind of getting that, the projects or the, how to say, like have a list of priorities or equipment, whatever the case might be, that is ready to go and that we're working maybe the year prior, developing the project and so scoping it. And that requires, you know, sometimes involving, you know, having accurate cost estimates, maybe having a B C A, which is the benefit cost ratio. And it's, it's not as simple as like something that maybe staff can just like complete it because we don't have the data available. And so it's just additional work that needs to be, I guess, outsourced. Even if we hire another person, that person might not have, and even if it's an engineer, they might not have the expertise to do, let's say, a B C A for like, let's say, a transportation project. And so there's, there's things that I think definitely need to be budgeted for as far as professional services. I think having another staff would definitely help, but it's just sometimes the applications, we have to, we only have like a month or maybe a month and a half to develop it. And so I guess that's where having that extra assistance or maybe have that flexibility to have that funding available so we can, if we really care about the project, we can actually make it happen and submit the application on time. And so, yeah, there's been delays, I think, I mean, staff is doing the best they can. One other thing is that I want to emphasize to everybody is like doing the grant applications for the directors and other city staff is additional work on top of their regular duties. You know, they, I'm, I'm an internal department. I don't have, you know, customers to attend or citizens, I have random calls, but I don't have day-to-day interactions with the public. And so they do, and so they have to do that and then also help me and my staff with the grant applications. And so that's a lot of work, a lot of stress put on them. And so I think it will be helpful to have professional services so we can outsource right away and not necessarily take over the, monopolize the time that belongs to the director. And, and having that additional help, like maybe an engineer would also help. So I'm not sure if I.
Well, yes, yes, so I think what we, I mean, I don't know, the rest of the commission has additional questions, but I think what we need to know is the number that you have here, which is six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, we need to know what the number is for project, for projects or professional services that can only be outsourced because of the specific request, right? As you mentioned. And what would an individual, another engineer in the department, what, what, how could they, how could they help? And, and what could they do to bring this number down, if at all? Right? So can we, you might not have that with you, but can we put that together?
I can work on the.
With Luis and.
But I think what the mayor's.
What, what, what I'd like to say is even if we get another engineer.
You're still going to need six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so getting, giving you another engineer just makes, what, what's the point then?
So getting another engineer would help me and the group distribute the workload evenly and, and reduce the amount of workload that everyone has. Like Anna was mentioning, putting a grant application together on the technical side and also the qualitative side, right? The writing side, that's, it's a lot of work. And we also have to take into account the fact that the engineering department also assists the planning and development department with the planning reviews and working with the developers, the subdivision engineers, the contractors and inspecting all of the, virtually all the construction that happens in the city, whether it's in the private side or the public. And to add is overseeing the construction of all the public infrastructure projects. So adding another engineer will greatly help the department. A professional engineer with the experience to handle projects in different stages, planning, design and construction. And would add that if we can get a junior engineer, an E I T, that would also help. But as I said, we have a normal schedule of costs that yearly we have to consider. And then because the R F Q that we had is so old and there isn't enough money in there anymore, this is something that we need, aside from the staff augmentation.
I think we can't use that list anymore anyway because the commission asked us to get a new list going.
That is correct. And, and so the ARPA fund was healthy, right? But we've used most of it and.
We've used all of it?
Yep.
Because you would have had to return.
You have to?
Yeah, yeah.
Luis, your department has just done fantastic. I know I'm putting a heavy load on you. I know Commissioner Pettis puts, all of us have, especially with the last floods. And it surprised me with how much work you do because when I'm talking to parks about a design like Vestal, it has to go through engineering. If I'm talking to you guys about, you know, just something as simple as expanding the drainage, the detention ponds at H P D, it goes, has to go through engineering. And so I can see that the strain that we've put on you because you guys have done such a fantastic job. Between you, tag teaming issues with Public Works, tag teaming issues with parks, tag teaming issues with, with our special projects department, you guys have a lot of weight on your shoulders, right? And then on top of that, like you said, even I've had to go with, to you with personal questions on developments, right? Or on things like that. And so you guys have been doing fantastic and I think we should just already put in that extra engineering, the full-time engineering position, especially because we're going to be going through transitions.
Did you say you could use an E I T also as opposed to a full-time engineer?
I could.
We need people to stamp and seal, homeboy. That's what we need, okay?
So, no.
I, I.
I know, but he mentioned an E I T, I'm just saying that.
As a second position, an addition, yes, yes, sir.
Oh, so an engineer and an E I T?
A professional engineer and an engineering training. It would, it would be fantastic.
In Lombrano, no, no, yeah, pero compone. Yeah, no, so he said in addition, yeah, in addition. Well, I, I, I think.
And that would, that would help us also increase the workload in the design in-house, in-house design. An E I T with sufficient AutoCAD or drafting experience would be fantastic.
Well, you know what you need, right? And so going to Anna's point about structural or whatever you guys need, just hire the people with the appropriate background.
And I would really encourage the city of Harlingen, all departments to look to see if there are any interns available for departments. We have the, we have T S D C and I'm sure there's, there's students there that would be able to learn, obviously, at, in the engineering department, but also be of assistance. And they're doing, they're do, I mean, that's where most of the, you know, the people that are studying at the community college level for these types of positions, not, obviously not an engineering position, but to just be, give, offer that additional assistance. I know other cities have an intern program and we should look into something like that. But so what are y'all thinking intern, I know Gabe doesn't want to hear this, but the professional services and funding them because.
We can't budget six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, Mayor. We're going to have to, we have to do the engineer and the E I T and then budget something, but it can't be that six, we can't afford it.
Excuse me, some of the things we can't like stop, right? So like the, the geotechnical, what the, the.
The testing, yeah.
Which is trying, why I'm trying to, I want the, the true number, not a padded number, not, you know, an estimate, like a true, true cost, so that way we, we can look to see what, what we can and cannot do.
I, I think there's still money in the, the testing component. We didn't take that out, we just took this one out, which was by itself. So we still have money for testing, but I think we can add some, some to this so he can continue doing what he's doing, particularly with outsourcing some of the projects that he needs to outsource because they don't have the capacity within the department to actually conduct those analysis.
Excuse me, but doesn't, by providing him with what he's asking for, there's going to be a return on that investment.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to also keep that in mind. It's not just the expense because what, once he finishes a project, it's ka-ching, ka-ching because the property taxes are increasing. And, and these other professional projects, I mean, the, the professional services is the same thing. We're going to have a return on that one, so it's not just an expense.
So, yeah, I think, I think we all agree that it's, it's vital. We want to be able to support you, we just want to make sure that the cost is the cost and, and that you've done your homework and that you're, it's as lean as, as possible. Just the fact that the grants department has secured over twenty-two million dollars in funding tells us that they're doing their job and everybody that works collectively to get that done, specifically the engineering department, you know, we know that y'all are rock stars, but you are working overtime in your, you know, not literally, but you know what I'm talking about. And so we want to make sure that we continue to, to assist you, you're doing a great job. But if we could just get that number and, and, and it be a number that's reflective of what you anticipate for this next year, because that was my concern and you, you know, answered that question that this is going to be reoccurring. So this now, we need to look at how we can figure out how this can be part of our budget moving forward year after year, which is difficult for, for Gabe and for all of us, right? To, to ensure that we want to continue, we're working on the budget and we, we, we struggle with this every year. No one wants to increase our, our tax rate, right? And we want to make sure that we have the amount of money to be able to provide those exceptional services. But as we are seeing that the cost, I mean, look at the chief's request, it went up, I don't know how much, three, four hundred thousand dollars. So the, as the cost increased for everyone in, in the community, they also increased for the city to be able to purchase. The purchasing power of the city is much different today than it was two, three years ago and it's going to continue to rise. So we want to just be responsible, but we need to have those real true numbers. And I'm not sure that if this is it, then, then, you know, I'll review what has been submitted, but if it can be trimmed, we'd like to see that.
This is Robert talking on this Assistant City Engineer. I just wanted to add that this more than likely is just going to be the minimum budget or the maximum budget since the R F Qs will have to be negotiated, one project will be higher than the other ones. And of course, as mentioned earlier, we're going to get the drainage master plan, so we're going to be able to tackle those high priority projects and hopefully do some in-house. But this would for sure help us getting those projects shovel-ready. So when the grant applications come in, we'll have everything ready. We won't have to be spending too much time putting the application together. We'll be able to submit great, great projects to be ranked hopefully high.
That sounds good. Let's just, and at our next workshop, I'd really like to see what that, what a nice compromise would look like in terms of having an additional engineer and what that dollar amount is for the professional services.
Would you also like to have the possibility of that intern partnership with a university?
That'd be wonderful.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I think it'll just assist y'all in your day-to-day.
Yes, that's how I got involved in local government, doing the internship with it.
I love it.
And it was a seasonal six months and then hopefully at the end, give you guys a presentation of what they did, whether it was plants or managed projects, but I'll put something together for the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? All right, let's move on.
Do you want to go back to PD? I think he got some other answers that Joe.
That's it, chief?
I think.
You snooze, you lose.
Got some good information on all this, so we don't need that food service trailer.
Okay.
We had purchased a six thousand dollar trailer, enclosed trailer that we're going to make use of.
Okay, great.
We do need the car hauler with the winch for, it's going to save us money on the toes. And one of the officers will actually be doing the winching and moving these vehicles around because we, we do have, we do a lot of outsourcing on the toes. This trailer, seven thousand dollars and it'll pay off.
What, what's the, what exactly, like what kind?
It's a car hauler, it's a flatbed with a winch. So a vehicle goes down, whether it's flooded or it's, you know, we need to go pick it up wherever it's.
City vehicle?
City vehicle.
Oh, okay.
And we can share this with other departments if we have to. And just, it'll load up the vehicle up on the trailer with the winch and haul it off and we don't have to outsource vehicle, tow.
And you're confident that you spend more outsourcing, seven thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, then that makes it.
Yeah. The, the police vehicles, those five, we would like to keep it at five. The F one fifty four-by-four EcoBoost, I can drop those from five to three. Those would be for, to replace detective vehicles that are old. We still have old two thousand and twelve Crown Victorious. And then the high-water vehicle, I'd recommend at least one vehicle instead of the three or high-water.
Which one is that one?
That's the two fifty?
I have two fifty, at least one for heavy-duty toes and high-water rescues. And then instead of two evidence vehicles, I'd like to at least have one evidence vehicle to replace an old, I think it's a two thousand and three, two thousand and four Expedition.
I don't know, chief, I think this time around, these guys might have to deal with the old cars one more, one more year just because we are.
We understand.
Stretched and, that's why I was asking, any necessary, like that are, you know, they are no longer functioning or you anticipate that they will no longer be functioning in the year to, in the year to come?
And we'll make an assessment from now to the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Definitely.
That's a week from today?
Yes, sir.
The next one?
Sounds good. Thank you, that was helpful.
I think we're on 13.
Traffic?
Yes. So the next item is traffic signals, 301,500. They're also asking for an F-150 pickup supercab.
Can we make our own trucks? Just kidding.
Manufacture them. And then they have four traffic signals, two zone flashers, system radar detection cameras and a striking machine.
The school zone flashers, are those because we need additional or there are some that are not working and we need to replace them?
No, ma'am. We try to replace as, as we need to. And so there are two school flashers that we need to replace. They're still working, they're functional, but eventually we have to replace them.
Like they're going to go out next year?
Yes.
The next department...
Are there any questions for Chris? Okay.
Next department is street maintenance, 468,466. We have a Big Tex trailer at 25,400, a backhoe loader for 155,000. We have a dump truck at 133,566 and a F-350 duly truck and a Skid steer, 93,300.
What is a kid steer?
That, that is a small piece of equipment that can have multiple attachments, right? And so it's, it's, it almost looks like a bulldozer, but in a miniature size.
Oh, like one of those like ditch witches?
Like what?
A ditch witch? Yeah, ditch witch.
Uh, no.
It's a small one?
It, yeah.
A little off-topic here. We're buying a bunch of trucks, a bunch of F-150s, F-250s, F-350s, right? Do we get like a bulk discount? Can we work on a bulk discount? Because it's getting ridiculous, like...
I think we should be looking at our local...
Sainsford ought to be giving us a frigging...
Yeah. Buy five, get one free?
Yeah.
Hey, there you go. That sounds good.
No, I agree. That's why I made that comment about can we make them our own, because it seems like every department needs a new, a new, a new truck. And so, Chris, I have faith in you. I know you're going to make some, some connection with a dealership and tell them that we want to be able to work with them and we need to lower our costs.
I don't know if there's a way.
So I, I've tried working with Sainsford and they, they still can't get on the co-op. So therefore we need to go out and get three quotes and, and most of the times we get that one co-op pricing, which in turn we get some type of return on it, a rebate. So...
So when you do it, does every department put in their, their three bids for, so engineering, are they going to put in their bid? And then public works is going to put in their bid separately? Can we put it all at one big bid and then see if we can just see where we get the lowest price?
Smoke.
Yeah.
We're going to the Costco of, and I'm very partial to the name Ford, but I mean, everything's F-150, F-250. I mean Dodge makes trucks, Chevy makes trucks.
Elite oil?
That's what I'm saying. I mean, why, why are we always...
Nissan, little Nissan.
Everyone gets a Frontier, guys. That's what we're going with.
And just a question I have.
Yeah. Again, we, we try to work with the vendors that are, that can offer us the options that we need, right? And so a lot of the times, well, not a lot of the times, most of the times, we try to go with Ford, right? Because if, let's just say this part goes out on this truck, we can always kind of switch, right, and try to get that one working. One of the things that I know was mentioned, I believe by Sol, was that one of their trucks that they're trying to replace, they, it went through our shop and we couldn't find the part, nor through a dealership, not even online. We had to go through a junkyard. And even like that, it took a little bit, you know, of a time for us to get that part. And so...
And it was a Ford?
It was a Ford.
Fixed or repair daily? Daniel? But to that extent, right, like I know that they do analysis on like fleet analysis on the, the amount of cost it's going to be over five, 10-year period. Do we do that also?
We do.
And so Ford has been the best one?
It is, sir.
And so like Southwest Airlines, they only fly the Boeing 737 because they carry parts for the Boeing 737.
Makes sense.
And it keeps their cost down.
And so if I could say one thing, there is another city that tried walking away from Ford because Chevy was a little bit more inexpensive and it, it didn't work out for them. They started having a lot of issues with the Chevys that they got.
Well, to this extent, then, I guess what we're going to ask is if you guys can get creative with those bids to see how we can get that better discount, right? Because it just makes, doesn't make sense to me that, you know, we're putting in 12 different bids for, you know, two trucks, three trucks, whatnot.
Sure. And I can tell you, some, some of the, the amounts that I saw, they're a little bit off, right?
Yeah.
Because of, of the vendor that I, that I've been working with, he gives us a way better discount. He, like, he'll find, I can tell you that a F-150 XL supercab that we've had been buying for about 41,000, right now he's giving us for 39. So, you know, he finds all kinds of ways just to, to make sure that he comes under everybody.
And then we give him our business.
Exactly.
So Chris, then if you can take point with Robert on helping coordinate those purchases, please, for all the departments.
Sure.
So we're only replacing trucks that need to be replaced. Absolutely, positively need to be replaced, right?
Deadline ready.
Yes. Like the 2003, whatever that was, that needs to be replaced. Yes.
So do we keep them to a certain year? Like we keep them only for 10 years and then we trade them out? PD is going to be different because of mileage, clearly, right? Like you're going to trade those in every three, four years.
One of the things that I've been working, because the city didn't have this, is where we came up with a study where a, a specific type of equipment can only last for long, right? Or it can give you its 100% operational ability. So for heavy equipment, it's seven years and for pickup trucks, it's 10. But I can tell you, there are pickup trucks that the city has that are 15, 16, 17 years old. And so...
Otisito Juan in downtown, his truck is, is old enough to vote, right? Like, I see that thing and I'm like, Otisito, man.
That was a good one. You're like a dad now, for sure. Dad jokes.
Yeah, so what Oscar is mentioning, right, so we, we have meetings on a regular basis with, with vendors to try to come up with an option, right? Where we can save money for the other departments and, and then for, for public works as well, right? And so today we had a meeting with a vendor where he was expressing to us that, that he was going to commence a, a type of operation where we can turn in a piece of equipment and, and get money back for it, right? Rather than take, put it on, on an auction, we have done it in the past and it works. Because we do get more money back doing it that way than through putting it on the auction. And so we're always looking at different options and, and, you know, I can tell you, public works does help other departments, right? And so whenever Shannon needs a truck, like she'll call me, "Hey, Chris, I need this." And we start dealing and wheeling, right, with other vendors. Same thing with other departments like Code. I know that we have helped, I mean, a, a lot of departments, right? And so, but we, we always try to get the best for, for, for a buck. We don't just go out there and say, "Hey, just, you know, give me whatever you have." And so we're always trying to make sure that we're efficient and, and saving money.
Great.
The next department is street paving construction. They are also requesting a Ford F-250, $60,900. Which brings us to the street drainage, which is requesting another 57,200.
That one we can scratch out.
We can scratch out?
So you hear that? Perfect.
Yeah, I heard that perfect, yeah.
They're also requesting a belly dump for 47,000, 2K water truck, 127,900, a day cab for 156,000.
What is that?
A day cab?
Yeah.
It's, uh, it looks like an 18-wheeler is the, the one in the front that pulls.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but it's called a day cab because it, it, it's got no rear section. Yeah.
Is that to replace the one that could go on fire like a year ago?
It is.
And so this 2,000 gallon, I guess that's what it is, water truck, that's to drain water or during construction to spread water, keep the dust down?
Yeah, that's it, sir.
They're also requesting a dump for 61,000, dump truck for 161,000 and a tamper foot compaction wheel for excavator for 15,900. The next department is parks, which they are requesting 750,345. 92,000 of that is to replace electrical service at Victor Park baseball fields. 52,000 Wilson Sports Complex shade structures for bleachers and softball fields. 52,220.
Excuse me. Going back to the replace electrical service, what is that breakdown for?
The light, the baseball field?
Is it equipment? Is it services?
The whole box is everything that's, it's under control. They're controlling the lights for the park. It's just outdated.
So it's all just hardware?
Yes.
The 92,000? Thank you.
Gabe, on these can, since the 4B you were mentioning for the, like the bleachers, the...
Yes. Anything park-related, we can pretty much go to 4B.
So, excuse me, so this 92 would fall under, under that umbrella?
Yes, sir.
Well, the whole 750 is what they're saying. Right, okay.
I don't know about this backhoe loader.
Yeah, there, there might be some that like, yes, like that, the equipment that might not be eligible, but...
Could we schedule a 4B meeting?
I was hoping to schedule one in July.
Okay.
Yeah, because we need to start getting the funds for the matching grants that we have. So we need to do that.
Yeah, I think they need to start having these discussions so that way we know we're, we're saying that that's going to happen, but that we have opportunity, because this would cover a lot of this and there would still be money left over even if they fund all the...
They have 7 million. They're projected to have 7 million, but in the next fiscal year, end September 30th.
Correct.
These park cameras, I think, are important. And the shade structures, you need shade in all of the parks.
For the park cameras, Danny, what type of park cameras are they?
I'm not quite sure. I know, I know there was conversations about putting cameras in the parks, the complex, at the Wilson.
Are we going to have like off-site access to their, to their recordings?
Yes.
They should, Emma said, we should be able to monitor them. I don't know about recording.
Well, there's no point in having the cameras, they're not being recorded, right?
And will they be, will they be infrared for evening and night activity?
Yeah, they're smart, the smart cameras have infrared and have facial recognition.
The answer I was looking for.
How much storage are they going to have, city? Capacity?
Minimum 30, 50 days, but we can, we can have more.
Okay. And I did get a email from Chris Boswell that the Rotary has a $75,000 for the soccer complex. So we need to work on getting that.
These are some additional items, which are wind screens for the tennis courts, replace nets at Victor Park, resurface courts at Victor Park and repair fence at Victor Park and make it ADA access and additional Ford crew, crew cabs.
Quick question. If we're going to have 4B looking, paying for this, it says install Monument Park signage at McKelvey, Windsor and Gutierrez Park. Talked to staff in the past for y'all's consideration about having digital signage. Eventually you start group, you can start at some of the parks. You can start at Pendleton Park, you can start at Victor Park, and you can start at maybe Wilson Park to have digital signage so that when we have different events that are going on, we can be notifying the public. You know, I think all of our constituents, at least the tunnels I've gone to...
That's a good idea.
They've all talked about, we need to tell them more and I figure that's an easy way of doing it. So Danny, if you can look at it, moving forward, maybe not for this, but for, if you look at it, please.
I think you need one for City Hall.
It already got approved.
Okay, good. I know, I mean, I was like, I had this conversation over and over.
And Lancy Hill too, right?
Lancy Hill, but it's not going to be digital.
Oh, that's right, it's not going to be digital.
Lancy Hill's not digital, but the one here it is. And, and construction should start here with the next two.
Why is Lancy Hill not going to be digital? What is it going to be? Like a, the old church type of...
I think they just need to fix it because it's bad.
Basically, it'll look like the one that's there currently, but it's price range, right? The one here, it's about roughly about 50 to 60% more expensive than the one in Lancy Hill. It'll look almost like that, but bigger, better.
Better design.
I think the distance between City Hall and Lancy Hill is not that big of a, I mean, in terms of traffic. But it does need to be replaced because I, there was some kind of video or something and I saw the front of Lancy Hill and it's pretty rough.
Yeah.
Eventually we need to replace them all because I hate seeing those, you know, four-by-eights or whatever you call them, like on wood and we have to staple things onto it.
We, we have to get away from wood. It's got to be...
The one, even the Lancy Hill, right?
Screens?
Even the one on Lancy Hill, it's not digital. It, it's still going to look really nice.
Who's going to be, Danny's going to be going out there and changing them every week?
Every day.
Every day?
Recreation Department is requesting 19,000 to replace four scoreboards at the Tom Wilson Youth Complex.
Is that mine, Danny? Is that my complex?
Yes.
Because it's Tom Wilson, but you're talking about the softball fields? That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Swimming pools is requesting 260,700, 135,000 of that is for the diving boards at Pendleton and Victor Park. Replace ADA, ADA lifts for 7,000. Replace a baler at Pendleton Park, 50,000.
What is that for? So that the pool can be heated?
Yeah, it's a boiler, yes.
Is that working?
No, it's functional, but it's, it's, it's in bad shape.
Life support?
Yeah, it, it goes off very frequently. And the pumps too. Are you going to replace those too?
Eventually, yes.
So is this something the 4B board can do? What about, I don't see anything in here and it may already be budgeted to the, any, like the indoor for the, outside the community center where you're going to have a little clubhouse or like you don't need, there's no funds needed for that?
Well, what we've been doing is, you know, what we have right now, we've been making it happen. So I think we'll be okay there, man.
Okay.
I just know, I think we moved the, the roof for, for Pendleton Park, but we put it into a, what is it?
Okay.
The, the other one is a Pendleton pool roof, 48,000. Is that the one you're talking about? That, that's the one with the other 48,000.
I think we definitely need to do that one. But that's the 4B. We're going to be looking at putting in the stage there at Lozano, stage and bathrooms, is there?
We had, we talked to Alexis and I believe that...
I don't know where they're at yet. Is it on here?
No.
So the bathrooms, we do have a donation from the Market Days Committee of $100,000 that needs to be in installment payments. So it's, it's, the donation's there. It's ready for the restrooms only. They only want it for the restroom purposes only. As far as the stage, the city does need to allocate that funding for the stage.
Do we know what that cost is?
No, we don't. We can get your cost. We already went out there and with the, with the new park superintendent and...
We can get that, we can get that.
He, he said he could do it.
Okay.
The next department is library services. They requested 200,000, 50,000 for light fixtures with LED lights and replace, and replace library carpet at 150,000.
What about the restrooms in the new children's center? Is Donna here?
Yes.
Or was that funded? Because it's not...
No, no. I mean, don't.
We're working on a quote from that, we had a couple contractors come out, but we haven't received anything back from them yet.
Okay, let him know that we're in a hurry.
And I do wanna say that the light fixtures, we actually purchased the fixtures for eight thousand dollars and the city electrician is gonna install them.
Instead of this fifty thousand?
Instead of fifty thousand.
So you saved us forty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
Great job.
Love you. I mean, we already did, Donna, but you know.
Let all the other departments see. That's how you get it done.
But I still need carpet and ceiling tiles.
Oh, Donna.
Well, how much would the ceiling tiles cost?
I think they ended up on the public buildings one.
Yeah, so on the first floor, it's seventy thousand, second floor is eighty thousand.
Saving it for long lasting.
Took care of that forty-two.
Co-compliance is requesting forty-three thousand seven fifty-five for a for a vehicle, a truck. Health Services is requesting fifty thousand for a vehicle. Public Buildings, uh replace Harlingen Municipal Court DX roof top unit sixty-six thousand.
What does that mean? What's a DX rooftop unit?
Air conditioner, I think.
Is that, that's what I was thinking, isn't it, AC?
I think so.
It is.
Probably need that if it's not working, but it's freezing in the municipal court.
The thing is that, um, so at the municipal court, there's there's like sections like this, right? What is wrong is all the internal stuff and not necessarily the floor unit.
Okay.
So whenever they design the municipal court and PD, those, all those systems have been outdated and they're not working as they should. And so every time that we have to go out there and do a repair, it's a costly repair. Just to make sure that like this section is not as cold as this section. And so that's what it is, is this, the DX roof.
Okay. I still didn't get from that whether it's like we need to do it this time around.
We do, we do, we we put it on our supplemental for the past two years, so.
And Robert can test it. While I was calling him that it's too cold.
That it's too cold?
Too cold.
Well, that's why I was like, yeah, because every time that I've gone, it's like, go, like it's winter.
It's winter. Uh, the next item is a municipal auditorium chillers at three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And we talked about the library ceiling tiles, seventy and eighty thousand. We have LED lights for the library at a hundred and three thousand. Casa de Amistad ceiling grid, seventy-seven thousand nine ten. LED lights for Casa de Amistad, forty-four thousand. Uh, two cameras for the recycling center, that that's at three thousand seven forty. Foundation for the historical Paso Real at Museum, ninety-four thousand five hundred. Replace the fire alarm system at the police, at the PD, that's thirty-seven thousand two seventy-five. Recycling warehouse, eighty thousand.
What does that mean, recycling warehouse?
So the current warehouse that we have right now, um, it it's it's the ceiling is coming off, right? We have a lot of leaks.
This is the old where we used to drive through?
No, sir, that is the the one across from that warehouse. The the one that you're talking about, that became a gym. And so it it's the the one across from it. Right next to it, but just on the other side.
Okay.
It it looks like a warehouse.
Okay.
Is it the one with the, what's that? Painting? Oil company?
Yeah, the.
Yes.
The red one?
Yeah, the red.
Pegasus?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
The next item is replace AC units at the Public Works, two ton unit. That's eighty-one hundred. Replace the AC unit at Public Works or two point five ton, that's eighty-six hundred. Carpentry work workshop, thirty-six thousand two twenty-five. Ford F two fifty crew cab, forty-nine thousand two hundred. Two cargo vans to replace unit one twenty-five and three twenty-seven at a hundred and twelve thousand four hundred. And a five hundred gallon water trailer with twenty-seven hundred PSI pressure washer for thirteen thousand six hundred. So all of these requests that are listed total nine million four hundred and two thousand seven oh seven. The next slide, uh, the next few slides talk about positions that are requested. There are forty-five positions requested at a value of two million six hundred thirty-one thousand seven ninety-four. Uh, the first one is municipal court deputy clerk. And also at the municipal court, a juvenile case manager. That's with a new operation, uh, I don't know if you remember the, the judge sent out that that letter that says that with the new statutes, they're required to have a case, a juvenile case manager to follow up on on the youth that have gone through the courts as they go through the school and after. Uh, we are requesting fire suppression, three firefighters. And those are come at forty-six thousand, uh, including salary and benefits. We're requesting a fire suppression covert part-time position to full, convert, well, part-time to full-time. Change titles from admin to one to admin two with increases. Is that, is that a fire? Is that a fire, both of those?
Those are not new positions.
Right, they're not new, there are conversions from.
Right.
From admin one to an admin three. Fire prevention lieutenant inspector, uh, that's a hundred and one thousand with salary and benefits. In Public Works, they're requesting an admin assistant one. Traffic signals, uh, they're requesting a sign shop worker and a traffic signal technician. Street maintenance, they're requesting an assistant foreman and an equipment operator two. Parks and Rec admin, they're requesting admin assistant two and an admin assistant three. Parks, uh, park superintendent at seventy-seven thousand five eighty-seven. A parks ground supervisor, sixty-one thousand oh forty-one. A parks mechanic assistant. And then six parks maintenance techs. They're requesting a parks electrician, a parks crew leader, two of them. A parks recreation coordinator, a parks athletic coordinator, a recreation superintendent, a recreation part-time summer playground assistant. Recreation part-time summer playground assistant. A recreation part-time summer track assistant coach. A swimming pools aquatic pool operator. Planning and Development is requesting a GIS technician, sixty thousand fifty, five fifty-one for total salary and benefits.
Excuse me, Robert?
Yes, sir.
On this particular one, this GIS technician? This one's been in the works for what, last two or three years? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, essentially, yes. So what this position is for is to handle all of the mapping that we have within the department. Currently, I'm the only one in the department that knows GIS. And given my current position, I don't have the time to dedicate time to work on GIS the way I need to. And if I don't work on it, I outsource to Brent, who's under engineering, so really it's just us two.
So this is a need?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning and Development is also requesting a city planner. Co-compliance is requesting a co-compliance officer. Health Services is requesting a admin assistant two.
I was about to ask that.
Sorry, how many people do we have reviewing plans?
Are you speaking on the planning side or the building side?
The planning side.
So currently, we have two. We have our assistant director and the city planner we just hired. And when I get a chance, I review plans, but that's rare nowadays.
And so, um, is that enough or how's it going?
Given discussions we've been having, um, it is a little bit strenuous sometimes. We get it done, we've got great staff members, um, but yeah, it can be a little stressful sometimes.
How many co-compliance officers do we have?
We have five, so this would be a sixth position.
So we have one for every district?
One last year, right?
Yes.
Last year, we added a secretary.
District.
And then we added another plans reviewer and then a building official.
Are they really doing one per district?
Yeah, because mine's, mine's Leo Nettlesilva. Savala.
Yes.
He's fantastic.
Yes, so there is one per district. Granted, the city has grown immensely, but they are covering what they need to, and then with the addition of the second mower, it's been very helpful.
Animal Services, they're requesting an admin assistant two. Sanitation, they're requesting solid waste driver two. Uh, sanitation is also requesting a GIS technician. Uh, golf course clubhouse, they're requesting an admin assistant one.
Come on, real quick, that GIS technician, is that any different from what planning's asking for?
Is that GIS technician for sanitation, is it any different than what planning is asking for?
No, it would be for the same thing. That would be to make sure that we have all of our mapping, our routing, and any additions or edits that need to be done within the department.
I think Commissioner Wood might consider is if we hire a GIS tech, but put him in MIS, that way they could share that position with all the other departments.
That's what I was thinking.
And 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 they could focus on anything that was needed for GIS throughout the city.
Yeah, that that is, it is timely, like Sol was mentioning, so I know GIS as well, right? But it it's time consuming. And so we need to have a person dedicated just for that.
I think the ideal place would be to put him under engineering.
You already have one there, you want another one?
Yeah, it could benefit it from there.
We already have a GIS guy.
Yeah, we do. Brent?
Brent, okay, that's what Sol said.
That's what she was saying.
Yeah, I thought that was just another part, okay.
Because everybody seems to go to engineering for for help anyway.
Yeah, but see, they're going there for that particular reason because they don't have anybody.
But they do have someone, they have, so.
So currently, yes, I'm a jack of all trades, but in terms of planning, I mean, if they were housed under MIS, it'd be a little bit easier for everybody to be be give given access to that individual. Um, and the person coming in is gonna need to understand how the city operates, of course. So for example, McAllen has their GIS division under their IT department.
So then we would move Brent from engineering?
No, no, I wouldn't leave him.
No, so Brent's an engineering designer, it's a little bit different. He's well versed in GIS, but he's an engineering designer tailored to engineering.
To hire an additional person and.
We don't even have a person, that's what she said. The guy knows GIS, but he does not like specialize in that's all he does.
He does specialize in GIS, but he specializes more in the engineering aspect of the city. So for example, planning, we do the maps, the zoning map, we keep that up, we do all the maps for public hearing cases, on occasion, we'll help parks out with maps. I just don't have the time to do that anymore.
Where would you suggest they ought to be located?
She said IT.
I would think IT, it's centrally located, that way everybody has access to them, and this person knows GIS. They would know what they're supposed to do, we give them the information, they generate any maps they need to generate.
We talked about adding this like two years ago when we were talking about the website and the county's services and all that other stuff, so yeah.
It's a department.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I thought that we had done it then, so I guess.
No, we actually focused on cybersecurity.
That's true, that's right, that's right.
So we made some improvements there.
Well, it's definitely necessary.
So we strike one and just move them and move this position to MIS?
I I would say so, yes.
Let's do that.
Because then it's for all departments housed, and then like Sol said, the voting curve of the city and all that good stuff.
Which one's cheaper, let me look at that one? Split the cost and let it rip.
Yeah, one's thirty-four, one's thirty-nine.
So.
So before, I don't know where we're at, but.
Twenty-five.
Page twenty-five?
Twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, did we breeze right over all the parks?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know, okay.
They start on page twenty-one through twenty-three, twenty-four.
I just, I I see how understaffed they are there at parks and and you've got all of this work that's happening in the parks department. Where's Danny, if you could have one? I mean, what, you need, yeah, you need a lot, so.
Yes.
So, um, just if you could give us the brief, brief, uh, one minute, two minute spiel? Because you now you have like all this knowledge and experience, twenty years here at the city, and now you are diving into parks. Um, and I know you and Oscar talk constantly about the challenges in parks. What do, what is it that you absolutely need to, within your, within your department, based on your observation and?
Right now, the maintenance technicians, for sure. And I know recreation needs some help as well, that's why we're asking for that coordinator. She's got a lot on her plate, so we we really need someone to help her with that. But for sure, the maintenance technicians.
Which do?
Which they do all the groundwork work in all the parks, the electrician, that's also a big need as well. Because right now, we're having to go out and get quotes for electricians and we would have one, you know, we could do everything in-house.
Are you creating another crew with all the positions that you've asked?
No, that's just to add to to what we have right now.
So like I told, the rest of the departments, whatever is being outsourced, can we get that figure to see if a person?
Sure, absolutely.
Could fill that instead and with Robert's help?
Sure, we can do it.
Okay.
With all the staff that's been requested, Danny, and all the equipment you requested, do they correlate?
Yes, I know, I heard Mr. Gonzalez mentioned something about the loader. We had one that was a nineteen ninety-seven piece of equipment that was auctioned out. So I don't have one right now, the skid steer as well.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, let me ask it a different way. If we were to give you these positions, are you then gonna come back to us and say, I need four more trucks, all that stuff?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Let the record reflect.
Conversation's being recorded, so.
Gabe, he's listening to what you're asking about, you're not gonna need a truck.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So in summary, the, there are forty-five positions that are requested. One point five million of that is in salaries and one million eighty-eight is in benefits for a total of two million six thirty-one, seven ninety-four.
What do you know, Mike, look at all that money that we have.
It's all money.
The next slide, I'll kind of give you an overview of where we are right now as far as like the budget before any of these additions. Our revenues are at sixty-six million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-six. The majority of that is in sales tax and property tax. Twenty-seven million four forty-nine is estimated for sales tax. Property tax, we've estimated very conservatively because we won't know until we get our certified totals, so we've left that at twenty-four million.
And we'll have that number in August sometime?
Uh, July twenty-fifth, we get it. The next large number that you see is the four million oh twenty-one, and that is not a cash number. I don't know if you remember last year, that's a non-cash infrastructure that we get donations from from developers on the different developments that they make.
Do, how much money do we have in that parks fund?
Not much, I don't think.
The developer parks fund?
Oh, that.
The park, we, you don't get it right away, right?
Yeah, I I could get you an amount of how much we've gotten so far.
Do you have an idea, Sol?
I don't, but what I can say is we we don't get it right away, it's collected at the very end, right before the plat is recorded with the county. But we can get you a number for the next workshop.
All right, thank you.
And can you give us a projection for the next year?
So those are all of our revenues listed out, that totaled sixty-six million nine thirty-three, two thirty-six?
Got a question. Your interest income, you're down about four hundred thousand. You're planning for next year, is it because we have less money to draw interest?
Right.
And or you're betting that the Federal Reserve will lower interest rates?
It's a little bit of both, we have spent some of our our funds and we're expecting a small drop in the in the interest rate. The next slide compares what was approved in twenty twenty-five compared to what we have in twenty twenty-six. The next slide compares what was approved in twenty-twenty-five compared to what we have in twenty-twenty-six. So in twenty-twenty-five, we estimated sixty-seven million two hundred and forty-six, two ninety. And for twenty-twenty-six, we have estimated sixty-six million nine thirty-three, two thirty-six. And of course, this doesn't include any increase in property tax. So as you see, it's kind of flat. So that, that should bring that up, once we do the calculation on the property tax. Another significant decrease was the infrastructure. It ended up being five million last year, and this year, we've estimated four million. That was a hard number to estimate because it just depends on the developments that occurred. And, and that doesn't have an effect on, on the fund balance because it's an, an amount of revenue and the exact same amount of expenditure. So that, that doesn't cause any fluctuation. Our, our proposed expenditures are sixty-three million six hundred and twenty-two thousand three sixty-three. The bulk, the bulk of that, of course, is in personnel services, which are all of our employees. That is at forty-four million seven thirty-three, one thirty-five. The next large is, large expenditures is services and charges, which is twelve million, twelve thousand three fourteen. We have supplies at three million three hundred and forty-one, nine forty-eight. Incentives that are mainly all related to the Bass Pro Shop of seven hundred nine thousand. And transfers to other departments, two million eight twenty-five, two eighty. This is how, how our expenditures are, are broken up in personnel. So police, of course, has the bulk of that. They have forty percent of the payroll expense, which is about seventeen million six fifty. Fire is next at twelve million six seventy-eight, three ninety-four, which is twenty-eight percent of the budget. And all other departments combined are fourteen million four hundred and four thousand, or thirty-two percent. And I, I did a little summary on the side of, of each department.
And our income was, is projected to be what?
Sixty?
Sixty, sick, call it sixty-seven. Okay. And the, and the expenditures here.
Sixty-three.
Next slide. So forty-four out of?
Out of the sixty-three.
What percent is that?
About seventy-five. Yeah, about seventy percent.
Seventy.
Okay. In the corporate world, salaries and bennies and all that stuff are about seventy-two to seventy-five percent. So we're doing better than most corporations.
Exactly. That's correct. This is an expenditure budget comparison between the two years, twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. In twenty-twenty-five, we, we budgeted sixty-eight million two hundred and eighty-three thousand compared to this year. We have sixty-three million six hundred and twenty-two thousand. The majority of that is because last year, we had nine point six million in capital outlay. Currently, we do not have any because we are in the process of reviewing what we are going to add back into capital outlay. These are some of the things that have been funded through the general fund or the hotel motel payables. In the general fund, we are funding the Loaves and Fishes partnership, seventy-five thousand. The Loaves and Fishes Open Arms Emergency Shelter, fifty thousand.
On that one, what I'd like to do is we normally funded the immigration services. But I think at the last meeting, they asked that we convert that to the Open Arms Shelter program. And so I'm asking that we continue funding that as opposed to the immigration program.
And I would like us to see if we can increase that Downtown Improvement District budget to increase a hundred thousand on top of that.
For what?
For the different projects and improvements we have going up.
That's out of, that's out of the hot funds? That's used for marketing?
Oh, yeah. Specifically this. I meant to bring it up earlier, but.
But on here for?
For, for marketing? Is that what you wanna do?
No, 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 no. Annual budget. Cause they only collected forty thousand from the, the downtown.
The assessment?
Yeah. I think it went up to, from forty thousand, it went up to a whopping forty-four thousand, right? And we just have a lot of work that we need to get done down there.
I think it just needs to go somewhere else.
Correct, correct, correct. Just putting that on the radar.
So for the general fund, we are funding four hundred and ten thousand eight sixty-one, which includes the Boys and Girls Club operations of one forty, one oh four, and the teen contract, one forty-five, seven fifty-seven. In the hotel motel, we are funding eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand five fifty-two. Sixty thousand for the Telfra Fireman's Pension Annual Conference, which we're expected to, or we are going to host in twenty-twenty-six. The Iwo Jima, thirty thousand. The Birding Festival, eighty-one thousand and forty thousand for the convention center. The Harlingen Performing Arts, twenty-four thousand. The Arts and Heritage Museum, sixty-five thousand. Visit Harlingen, five hundred fifty-six thousand, five fifty-two, and Downtown Improvement District, thirty-two thousand.
I have a question. So the, the Visit Harlingen has their bucket, and then the Birding Festivals are separate. But they all fall under, I thought they, Visit Harlingen does their own promotion of them aside from what we provide?
They do some.
I believe that also includes their salaries and benefits at five fifty-six.
The CBB, you're correct. But what, I just wanna make sure that.
And for concerts also.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
So I, the reason, the, the reason why I'm asking is because I think last year, we talked about at your park, at Arroyo Park, they did the, I don't know what it's called. It was, where's Louise? Do you remember Louise? What was that? It was called the, the Down at the, at the Arroyo or something like that, that park?
Yeah, the Showdown of the Arroyo.
That one. And so we had talked about providing some, I guess, a budget for marketing for, for them because they bring people down. So it, can they do that through the CBB budget, or does it need to have a line item?
No, if it brings out of town visitors, the CBB can.
So, so it, so it doesn't need to have like separate, just, just because of the amount of, in the convention center and all that? Is that why the Birding Festival is separate?
No, the Birding Festival is because they're a separate organization.
Okay.
And so we use the forty thousand dollars because they need seven days. We only give them five.
Right.
So we have to pay for the other two.
I guess what I'm wondering is that, do we need to approve that here, or is this something that the CBB can do within their own budget?
No, we need, we need, because the eighty-one thousand that the Birding Festival gets, it's not just for?
No, for this event, the showdown.
Oh, no, the CBB can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can have them advertise for them.
It's just cause they, they did, and I, I know that they have the numbers and there was hotel rooms and people that came from Mexico and all these other places. All right. Thank you.
So the next slide is a summary of all of our special revenue funds. With the beginning fund balance, projected revenues, transfers, expenditures, and then our ending fund balance. So these funds include any funds that are not the general fund and that are not enterprise funds or internal service funds. So this.
Excuse me. Were we gonna zero out that one ninety for the tennis courts?
Yes, that'll be zeroed out on the next one.
Okay.
That's just an operating transfer to, to, for operations.
Right.
I have a question for you, cause there's, just so, some clarification, cause there's been some misinformation, I think, in the community. This catastrophic emergency fund, during our audit committee meeting, when I asked the auditor what we could use this for, he specifically said it could not be used for providing assistance to flood victims.
Right.
And this is for, can you, the sandbags, and can you elaborate a little bit on that?
So we use that fund whenever there is hurricanes or disasters to do sandbags or anything when a disaster strikes at that moment.
But cannot go to individuals?
Right. We don't, we don't give to individuals. That's what the, that's what the internal auditor said.
Right. Just because there's all this, you know, I think that people in the community see, which rightfully so, right? It's catastrophic emergency. Well, then, you know, can we provide hotel vouchers? Can we do this? Can we do that? And the answer is a?
It's not for individuals. It's for, for the emergency, for the city as a whole.
And during the last disaster we had in March, we had a lot of staff that had to work overtime. So we actually paid them overtime and it came out of this fund. Yes.
And, and then for the equipment for this, for packing of sand and all, anything that is related to that, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
The sand's purchased out of here.
Okay.
Can we use it, thank you for, for clarifying that, Mayor. I didn't, I knew there was a, a caveat to it. Could we use it to buy equipment preemptively? For example, let's say we don't want our fire trucks going through high water. Could we use them to buy boats?
I think you asked a question similar to that.
We did. I asked the chief that, and he said he had enough boats. They've got three, is what he said.
I had, and, and that was the response I got. So we're good in that.
Oh, trailers to tow the boats or the trucks to tow the boats so that they're on site? That's what, can we use this money for that?
I can definitely go do research on, on the original ordinance when it was done, so.
Commissioner, I would rather, if we need to buy those, I think we can, but I think we would probably take them out of the fund balance or any of our. I would just leave that for whenever there is a disaster or some sort of event that's happening. And I would just use that money for that.
Yeah, okay. That works.
But again, this is not.
Not for individuals, right?
Right.
It's for the city as a whole.
Thank you.
So our, our beginning fund balance for the special revenue funds is eighteen million five hundred and seventy-seven thousand one thirty-three. We projected revenues of fifteen million three eighty-five, three ninety-seven. We are transferring in to various funds, three million three forty-two. So our requested expenditures are sixteen million two hundred and twenty-three thousand five sixty-eight, which brings a revenues over expenditures of two million five hundred and four thousand three twenty-five, bringing our fund balance up to twenty-one million oh eighty-one, four fifty-eight. And that's projected at the end of nine thirty, twenty-twenty-six.
Excuse me, before you, we move on, the Free Trade Bridge?
Yes, sir.
Can we get a breakdown? Can you ask the county for a breakdown on, on, on the number of passengers, cars that comes through and trucks and so on down the line? I wanna, I would like to confirm.
If I could get that information from their annual comprehensive report also. I'll, I'll look to see if it's on there. If not, I'll request it.
Please.
And that's passenger vehicles?
Everything.
Yeah, commercial passing.
I don't think they have.
Pedestrian?
Pedestrian, no. Not at that one.
All right. I will do, I will, I will request that. The next slide is all of our enterprise funds, which are the municipal auditorium, the sanitation and sanitary landfill, our Harlingen Arts and Heritage Museum, and our municipal golf course. So our estimated fund balance, we are beginning the year at ten-one, twenty-twenty-five, projected thirteen million eight fifty-three, one forty-nine. The majority of that is in sanitation and sanitary landfill, nine point two million. We are projecting revenues of twelve thousand, twelve million five hundred and two thousand five twenty. We are projecting a transfer to the museum of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand three oh five.
What is that for? Like salaries?
Yeah. Salaries and operation, yes. They, they, they don't generate enough revenue. They only, they generate four, four thousand, four sixty.
But that's where that, like the salaries goes in this, in this slide?
Exactly, yes, correct. So expenditures are a hundred and thirty-two thousand seven sixty-five. So that brings our estimated fund balance to thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. And to the right, you'll see the cash balances. We put the cash balances next to it so you can see that not all of the fund balance represents the cash balance.
And the golf course, I thought that we had gotten a presentation that they, that they were not gonna be, and that there was some profit. Is that not right?
So, so now there's, there's not profit. They're still low, but.
That's not for one year's operations. That's a cumulative number, but it's a not cash number.
So, so if you remember, the estimated fund balance in the past used to have a deficit fund balance. It was a really large fund balance number, maybe like two million. But because it's an enterprise fund and the 4B contributed the five million, once they did all of the renovations on the golf course, that gets contributed into the Tony Butler Golf Course Fund. So it went from a negative to a positive because now you have all of these assets, which represent the infrastructure that make it go positive now.
Like the golf carts?
Like the golf carts and all of the work that they did on the golf course.
Okay.
I think it was mostly the work on the golf course because the golf courses are leased. They're not really our asset.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. Yeah. I mean, they still go on as a leased asset, but, but you're right. The majority of it is, is the contribution from the 4B, for the golf course. The motor vehicle warehouse and the health insurance represent our internal service funds, and they work the same way. They're kind of like a business. They generate revenue and they do expenditures. So we started the year, or projecting to start the year at three million six hundred and forty-nine thousand nine twenty-six, the majority of that being in the motor vehicle warehouse. Projected revenues are eight million seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred. Projected expenditures are eight million five hundred and sixty thousand six forty-four, which is a revenue over expenditures of two hundred and eight thousand five fifty-six, bringing our ending fund balance to three million eight fifty-eight, four eighty-two. And I've also put the cash balance on the side as the fund balance is not a, a representation of what they actually have in there. So altogether, all of our funds, we have the general fund, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. Beginning projected estimated fund balance is sixty-nine million three thirty-six, three thirty, and that's all funds combined. Projected revenues of a hundred and two thousand six thirty-seven, three fifty-three. Transfers between funds is four million four hundred and twenty-three thousand eight oh one, bringing, or our estimated expenditures are one hundred and one thousand one fifty-five, one oh four. So we're, we're estimating that we have revenues over expenditures of five million nine oh six oh fifty. And keep in mind, this general fund, the three point three, does not include any capital outlay until we add that back. So estimated fund, fund balance at the end of nine thirty, twenty-twenty-six is expected to be seventy-five million two forty-two, three eighty. And of course, that doesn't include the capital outlay. Our cash balance for the enterprise funds and the internal servants' funds are on the, on the right-hand side. So at this point, we, we have some additional budget considerations. We have two items. We have TMRS comparison of optional change in plan design. So the first one is to increase the contribution rate to eight percent. And the next, on the same number one, updated service credits, possibly ad hoc, and at what percent?
On the, if we can look at page thirty-seven, it has a second drainage crew that we talked about creating. One of the, this would be taking a replica of what we have now and creating the second crew. And one of the things that we talked about was that we wanted to help DD five, DD six, and some of the other, perhaps, text dot that has drainage ditches inside the city. And one of the things that I wanted to have our crews do was that we would focus on widening, deepening the drainage ditches. Not necessarily mowing, have their respective districts that own the ditches do that themselves. And the only thing, and I spoke to Oscar about this, the only thing that we wanted to haul off was any trees or limbs that we took out. We'd haul it in our own trucks back to the, to the, to the warehouse and we'd burn it off. We'd incinerate it. So with, with that in mind, and I talked to Oscar about this also, we don't need to have all this list of equipment, the one point eight million. And I think we can sit down and perhaps at the next meeting, come back with a more precise list of equipment. But I think we're gonna need backhoes, excavators. We won't need the boom mowers. And I'm not sure about the other pieces of equipment, but I'd like to discuss that with Oscar. But this is just a, a, a brief picture of what it is that we would like to do. And I think we can, we can have some savings by removing some of this, some of these pieces of equipment.
But these don't come out of the general fund, right?
No.
That we will purchase just like last.
Well, they, they do, cause it's general fund money, but it would come out of the, out of the fund balance.
If you recall, Mayor, last time, the way we did it is we reallocated ARPA money.
That's how we do it.
That was designated to Lozano, right? And that's why we were able to pivot off this.
Okay.
So this is the first time we're gonna take a hit on this equipment.
Okay.
A direct hit.
With, with, with general fund money. Yeah, it'll be fund bal, fund balance.
Okay.
And, um, it would be a fund balance for the, uh, equipment costs. And then out of general operations for the personnel. But again, we would need, um.
All of it.
All of them, yeah.
So you'll pre, you'll provide us a revised list?
Yes.
Will you need the four operators?
I, I need to get with Oscar to figure it out.
The four operators and the drainage supervisor will need.
Like the same crew duplicated?
Correct. But to Gabe's point, we're not gonna need the boom mowers because we're not gonna be mowing.
Right.
We're gonna be excavating.
But one of the things I'd like to talk to Oscar about is if we already have one supervisor, do we need to hire a second? Or can the same supervisor oversee both operations?
I think, I, I think we, uh, I think we do need a superintendent, okay? Because, uh, what that'll allow us to do is to simultaneously be working to, to big projects, whether it's expansion or, or re-sloping or whatever it is, right? Now, in defense to the, the boom mowers that Chris put up there in that list, uh, it's bad enough we can't keep up with our own drain ditches right now with the mowing, right? And that was the only reason that he put them in there. I understand what Gabe doesn't, he doesn't wanna, uh, fully commit to doing all the, all the maintenance on DD five ditches or DD six. But this'll allow us to at least maintain our own ditches and keep them better mode, right? Which will allow to, the water, the, all the, the grass not impeding the flow of it. So, so that's the reason why they're there.
Chris, are we gonna need all this equipment here?
Yes, sir. Yes, we do.
I, I can tell you that, you know.
There's no revised list then. Why, guys?
So, i- if, if we truly wanna move to a second drainage crew, we need the equipment, right? I know it hits hard on the pocket, but if, if we wanna be successful with a second drainage crew, we do need those pieces of equipment.
We're playing catch-up here, and, and, I mean, you've seen the improvements we've done the last three years, they have worked. You know, uh, this will just allow us to go a little bit faster. I mean, we're, we're playing catch-up here, we're, we gotta work right now for the next ten to fifteen years. I mean, uh, people wanna know, yeah, we can come up and tell them, well, we applied for so many grants, so many grants here, so many grants there, but they wanna know when the excavator's gonna get there to their drainage behind their yard. Just like this morning, we met with this lady and, 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 uh, she said, I wanna know when you guys are gonna get here to, to help us control this erosion problem we have here. So, that's what they want. And in order for us to go out there and do this, we need more personnel, we need more equipment. I mean, it, it's just, this is a, uh, uh, we're reaping the benefits from not addressing this earlier. And, and, I mean, but there's no sense in crying over spilled milk, we, how do we move forward from here, moving, you know, how do we do it? And this is the, unfortunately, somebody's gotta make those tough decisions, you know, and.
So, those are not benefits. But yes, I agree, I agree with you. So, Gabe, with all of this, and then I know that we're gonna talk about next, um, salaries, right? And things like that for the, for the rest of the city. And I've been kinda keeping writing my notes, and it just keeps, the figure keeps going up and up and up. You're not gonna be able to have a balanced budget with all of these requests, so.
No, I'm, I'm gonna present a balanced budget to the commission.
Yes, but that's because you're gonna trim and trim, right? So.
But if it goes above that, it's because of what was added.
And so then you would just take that from, that would mean we would just have a reduced, um.
Well.
Balance in the general fund because you are.
I, I do not recommend that we fund positions.
Right, forget the positions, but I'm saying, equipment-wise, I mean, each one is three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand dollars. So, once you, once you get to that point where you've done all you can to trim, and then in order to have this up, I, I mean, I'm just trying to, to, to just make sense of it, that you're going to have, in order for you to have a balanced budget, you're gonna have to carve out some money from the general fund, and then moving forward, we are going to have less money in the general fund, period, right? In order to be able, if in fact we go forward with all of this. So that the commission understands, right, that that's, that's what ultimately would be the end result here.
Right.
Because it's a lot, you've done, and, and I just wanna commend you on, 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 you know, you did an amazing, you know, incredible job trying to, um, trim as, as, as much as possible, but like Oscar says, obviously, you know, we're in a position where we don't, I know that this commission doesn't wanna kick the can down the road anymore, uh, but what does that mean? What is that gonna look like? And then how does that impact our credit rating? How does that impact our ability, our, our bond rating? All of those things.
Obviously, your fund balance is a big factor in your credit rating. And we, this last time, uh, Robert and I sat through, uh, I think it was a standard and force rating?
Right, S and P.
And they kept our rating at a double A plus.
Because of the fund balance?
Because of what we've done here at the city. And being conservative in our, not issuing additional debt, um, reducing our existing debt, keeping a healthy fund balance. So, all that is accumulation of what they look at. And so, there comes a point where you get, where you deplete your fund balance, and you start getting, uh, to areas where maybe those rating agencies may not feel as comfortable. And so I think.
They are actually trying to downgrade some of the cities.
Oh, actually, and they, they, they thought they were gonna downgrade us.
I remember, I mean, those were very stressful situations, times, and, and, you know, you guys, um, came out ahead, and, and I know that you were, um, concerned, as Robert was, was concerned, and, and we were successful because you've been great, a great steward of taxpayer, taxpayer dollars. And that's why we were able to say yet again, the city is, has had this rating. So, I just don't want us to, to jeopardize that in, in any, in any shape or form. So, I know that's a tall order, but, um.
Well, and we don't have to make a decision tonight.
Right, right, but as you are, um, working on the second, on the second bud, on the second workshop and presenting as, hopefully there's some cost savings with the assignments, everybody has homework on what to do. And so that way we can fund as much as possible without, um, compromising the, the credit rating of the city.
I think, if, if I may, I think if we had to, if we had to trim some of this thing right now, we could trim out six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars out of this, which would come out to one-point-three-two.
That's a big, that's, that's good. I mean, that's why I'm saying, let's just kind of really get to, we, we want you to have, especially, especially the public works department. I mean, I, I've seen, uh, the work that you've done, and we have seen the results and how it has mitigated, um, the issues. And so we want to be able to give you the resources that you need, uh, to continue moving, moving forward.
So, um, I think one of the things that would help is knowing what the commission would feel comfortable taking from the fund balance.
I think that's a recommendation for, I mean, I know that you're gonna say no, but what, I, I think what, what I'm, what I would like is a, um, you know, we rely on you because you have this experience and to, to be able to tell us, this is what we can. Obviously, everybody here wants to give them everything that they want, and that's just not possible. But what can we do? How can we stretch ourselves, um, to the point where we are still strong, um, and we're not having those issues down the road? Because we don't want to solve one problem and create another.
Robert, I'll, I'll need to borrow your magic wand.
Yes, well, I have one. I can, I can, I can next, mine's pink, but I will bring it to you.
I have a question, Robert.
Sure.
The first section was not funded nine-point-five million dollars.
Right.
And then we have these other pages. If you add them up, what's the poisonous magic number?
Those are about eleven, the positions and the equipment?
I guess you're saying.
Sure, everything you've shown us.
Yeah, that's eleven million.
Elite, uh, on the shy side.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, uh, nine-point-four in equipment and two-point-six in, in positions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's call it twelve.
About twelve million, nine-point-four of that would just be a one-time hit, whereas a two-point-six would be recurring every year.
Right. And then when you look at property taxes, what, twenty-four million?
So that's very conservative, I expect that to be a little bit higher, so.
Right. That's a, that's kind of.
And we just have one more item to cover.
Yes.
And the TMRS, we cannot afford to spend any money into that because if we raise rates, then our unfunded actuarial balance explodes, and that affects the bond rating, 'cause the city's on the hook.
And that's, that's correct, your, the unfunded liability, although it's, it's a non-cash item, it does affect your bond rating. And when, when we, uh, Robert got this from TMRS, and when we actually received that, we had looked at the options, if we're gonna recommend either option five or option eight. But after looking at the impact it would have on the general fund, we can't recommend neither one of those.
No.
They're too expensive.
Sorry, repeat that?
We were going to look at, because TMRS is here, passed, well, not TMRS, Congress, passed a bill that would allow you to increase your rate up to eight percent on your contributions. We're currently at seven. And so we thought we'd go up to eight percent, and then, uh, fund an ad hoc, uh, updated service credits. But the impact of either one of those two options, option five is one-point-seven million, in, as an unfunded liability. No, that's a cash contribution.
Right.
And then option eight would be one-point-three, it goes down, but it's still too much. So we're not gonna recommend either one of those.
I, I mean, if you could put more into TMRS, then we can't buy anything.
Right, so.
Which is kind of what we're, that's.
Yeah, that's.
So, so question, in our current TMRS, what is our unfunded actuarial liability as of today?
Eight-hundred-seventy-three thousand.
Okay, so that's at eight-seventy-three. Okay, so should anything bad happen, then the city has to pump in eight-hundred-and-seventy-three to keep it afloat.
That's if every employee in the city were to retire at the same time, that, that would be the liability.
And that's what that represents.
Right.
Everybody were to retire right now.
And the higher that number is, the worse it affects the bond rating. Because it creates a financial, unfunded financial liability to the city.
So, the only option that we can recommend is option one, is if you wanna consider anything for the employees, that would be that. Because that has the least impact on the general fund.
What's that? Option one?
Option, yes, it, it doesn't increase the contribution rate, it leaves it at seven percent. It provides, uh, a one-time, uh, updated service credits to the employees.
Define that.
It, uh, shy of increasing the, uh, the contribution rate, uh, for those employees that have been here over time, it actually smoothes out their contribution rate so that, um, it's not based solely on what their salary is, but if they've had increases over the years, that helps them when they retire.
So if they were at thirty thousand, I'm just using, when they started, and they're at fifty thousand now, it's gonna be as if they were at fifty thousand the whole time, their contributions.
Now, that's the part I don't.
Not necessarily at fifty, but kinda like an average, it, it.
So forty, let's say.
Yeah, like.
A curve, it's a curve.
TMRS uses the term smoothing out, and so they didn't really define that, but, but you're right, it wouldn't be as if they were at thirty percent, five years and then.
It, it would be like a moving average.
Yeah, right.
Okay, but if we did option one, then our unfunded actuarial liability goes up to six-point-three million?
It, it does, and then over the years, it comes down because when we started, um, our liability wasn't eight-hundred-and-seventy-three, it was into the millions. And it's come down over time, so it'll come down eventually as we pay into TMRS, and as employees leave, and they're not vested, that contribution that we made on their behalf stays in fund.
Correct.
What if we move that vesting number up?
You can, from five to ten?
Let's say you do that, we can still bump everyone up, but it limits our liability.
Because this is explosive, um, the investment change.
That would be very difficult to impossible under federal law.
Oh.
You, you can't have a vesting schedule forever.
Well, if you change it now, it would only be for future employees.
Correct.
Okay.
But, but I don't think you can do that, I think federal law mandates five years.
The county, we have eight.
On TMRS, I believe that you can have like ten, uh, and even more, like I, I was on the website. I, I can get you, some, some of the cities have higher vesting periods.
Let's see if that even moves the needle at all, right? It may not, we just.
I can request, uh, other options, like, like you could do as many options, and he'll put them all together, and then he'll email it to me, and then.
Do you know what the, what the S for the county?
We'd like to see, yeah.
Sure. And, and I could see what vesting periods they offer, and I'll, I'll get options on that.
And that'll be for next week?
Uh, yes, I, I'll email him and see if he can get it to me on the seventh.
Next Monday.
Alright.
And then what I'll do is I'll take out the projects that we can, I think we can get from the 4B.
And then let's schedule a meeting for them for me, so that way it's within the, before our final budget period.
Okay, now to the important thing. I have two cans of dark ale, uh, from my wife's, uh, wedding, and she went to a wedding in Wisconsin. We don't drink this stuff, anybody want it, it's yours.
Dark ale? I think that was a sign from God.
No dark ale drinkers? You'll take it?
Yes.
Okay, it's yours, you win.
Are we, um, are we on, yeah? Are they, said he'll check to see if we're still on? We're good, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on.
They usually have an on-air button they leave on and turn off.
Yeah, I was like, I don't see it.
Yeah. It's a manual button, it doesn't really.
So for employee salary increases, is that where we're at?
Yes, and then, um, we, we looked at, at, um, possible increases for the employees, and, um, this is not in the PowerPoint, because this is something that we worked on late. Robert, I don't know what I did with the, um, oh, never mind, I found it. Okay. We did, um. Okay, we did an analysis on providing every employee a three percent increase, um, and that came out to four-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. And then we looked at providing every employee a five percent increase, and that came out to six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. Now, that did not include the directors. The directors, we wanted to do, uh, a merit increase, which would go, um, anywhere from three to eight percent. And that would cost a hundred and forty-four thousand to fully fund, but, um, based on their performance, I would get varying amounts.
Would you go back to the three percent and the five percent? What are the amounts again, please?
Uh, three percent is, uh, four-one-two, oh-two-five.
And are these under seventy-five, or these are just non-director?
No, the, the, the positions for the employees is everybody.
So, let me, okay.
Except directors.
Okay. So, the, the three percent, because when we did the evergreen, we did everybody under seventy-five.
Under seventy-five, yeah.
So, basically, the same employee would either get a three percent or, or five percent under this.
Now, we can, we can provide a scenario where we take that number out and see what impact it'll have on everybody else that didn't get an adjustment when we did the evergreen. We can, it's gonna go down, we can figure that out.
I had a conversation with Gabe, and I'll just share with the commission, that I, I, I like the idea of a merit-based increase. I like the idea of a merit-based increase, and for Gabe to have the discretion, he's the one that works with the directors on a day-to-day, you know, there's, it's clear that we have some real rock star employees here at the city of Harlingen, and wanna make sure that they're compensated competitively, and doing the merit base gives him the opportunity to really reward those that are performing with, instead of doing a three percent across the board, or five percent, or what have you, that gives him, because I think, and I know that you had mentioned, I know you fought for it last time, you know, they didn't get that, and so they've been waiting patiently, most of them, and, and so this gives, gave that opportunity to retain our employees. So I think that the merit base is definitely the way to go. And then I don't, I'm not sure about how the numbers impact our budget with the three percent or five percent, but I do think, depending on, notwithstanding, right, whatever that decision is on the other employees that have already received a raise, that we should give him that flexibility to increase those that need to be increased by a larger margin.
You know, I don't disagree, I would just tack on something in my mind, because the people that are over seventy-five, like you said, had to wait, right? And so what I would say is that they should get a base amount as well, right, three percent, five percent, and then on top of that, then if there is merit based on top of that, then that works. And I think at that point, now we have kind of done that, like, adjustment, and everyone is where they should be, and from now on, not only do we do merit basis here, but we continue it, moving on.
I think giving, I think that Gabe would, I trust that he would take that into consideration when he's making those adjustments. And I just feel like, as a commission, we don't have enough, we don't know enough about, it's unfair, because like, I know Chris is a rock star because of the kind of work he does in his department, and we all communicate with him regularly, and then we saw all the great work that was done. But that doesn't mean that others in other departments that we don't communicate with on a daily basis aren't, you know, equally as important or producing in, at that same level. It's, but Gabe is the one that's gonna know. So I think that, I know that this is not popular, but people that are not performing, he's gonna know, and I don't know that we just give raises, because if we're gonna operate the city, and we are going to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars in private business, you know, I, I'm not going to increase salary to someone that's not, there's no ROI there. And so I think giving him those tools are going to ensure that he has a great staff.
I think we're saying the same thing, right? I just, everything you said, I agree with, right? I just think that, that three to eight percent, because they had to wait those three years, there should be a base amount increase, and then if he wants to increase it on top of that, then he, like you said, he has that judgment to increase it on top of that. That's all I'm saying, is just to supplement what you're saying.
And I'm saying, maybe he doesn't want to do that with...
And then he doesn't have to, 'cause he has the discretion to.
Right, but not if you're saying it's across the board.
For the people that make seventy-five and over that did not get it last time.
Right, so you delegate that to him, then he takes care of it.
But this is only for directors, the discretion you're giving them only relies to directors, so there are gonna be people that do not fall in that.
Well, all the other people that aren't directors that are over seventy-five are in that number, that three percent I gave you.
They're already getting it.
But I think what the mayor's saying, that perhaps we should take the evergreen people that got it already, and extrapolate that number out and see what it looks like. Because they've already been adjusted once, and then there's, there was solid compression between those people.
That's the concern I have.
Yeah. And so even if we give it to everybody, the compression's still gonna be there. I can, I can look at both options, and present some options to you.
I don't know if anybody has any other, I mean, we're kind of...
I understand what you're saying, I think it's a valid point, but again, I see, crunch your numbers both ways.
Right, right, I agree.
I can do that. That's all we had.
All right.
Stop, before we leave, on page six, can you give me a breakdown of what all that stuff is? That's all I'm asking.
Did you get that, Robert? Robert, did you get that, page six? Okay, that's all I had, Mayor.
That's all, okay, thank you, we appreciate everybody for, oh, okay, yes, for being here. And we adjourned.
Yeah, that's for the external cameras.